All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Galt City Council for October the 18th of 2022. Can I have a report from the closed session?
Council received information and was provided direction, and there is no reportable action.
All right, thank you, sir. Can I have a roll call, please? I'm sorry, call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Here.
Councilmember Papano?
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Lozano?
Here.
Mayor Farmer?
Here. If everyone would please join us for a silent prayer followed by the flag salute.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Tina, if you could please read our replay statement.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.zaccounty.gov. Today's meeting will air Friday, October 21st at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, October 22nd at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrolcable14.
All right, thank you. Do we have any agenda approval additions or deletions? Mr. Hines, I think we are going to pull...
Yes, we're going to pull the ADU item from consent and bring it back in a slightly revised version based on recent state law.
Okay.
It was just signed.
So we are going to be pulling item J4 from the consent calendar. Next, we'll have presentations. Looks like we have the Beautification Committee Annual Report to City Council.
It is my pleasure to present the 2021-2022 Annual Report of the Beautification Committee. This report outlines the community's activities throughout the fiscal year. The committee wishes to thank the Community Development Department, the Public Works Department, and Parks and Recs Department for without their help, the committee could not have completed their activities this year. We are also fortunate to have the support of the community volunteers and the businesses such as Cal Waste. The Beautification Committee has struggled this year, coming from online meetings to finally meeting in person. We have recommitted to our mission statement to enhance, restore, and beautify the city of Galt by advocating a high standard of community involvement, cleanliness, maintenance, and attractiveness. We have awarded Home of the Month and Nominate Your Neighbor certificates to several homes in Galt and continue to solicit more nominations. We finally got some pots moved from their neglected locations to businesses who committed to taking care of them. We provided them with potting soil and a starter plant. We wish to thank Farmers Insurance, Next Generation Barber Shop, and the Galt Teen Center for providing new homes for the pots. They are now thriving. With our new budget, we have acquired necessary supplies, garbage bags, gloves, and will be adding more rolling trash cans. We would like to thank you, the Sandus, for helping out with supplies in the past. We have concentrated our cleanups on the gateways into Galt, C Street, A Street, Lincoln Way, City Hall, the library, Forest Street, and areas around the market grounds. We cleaned up the promenade and Forest Street on the morning of Farm to Fork Dinner to help make this event a showcase for Galt. We are always open to other areas that may need our help, and we have noticed a difference since the new letter person was brought on board. It has made our job easier. Thank you. We have partnered up with the Youth Commission, Horizon Church, and Code Enforcement to help out neighbors in need. We always have youth who are regulars in our cleanups, such as families, the Boy Scout, 4-H, and others. I personally love seeing the kids being taught the value of community service and hope it motivates them to continue to serve. I would like to thank Mayor Farmer for giving me this opportunity to serve on the Beautification Committee and hope to continue serving in the next cycle. Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for the Beautification Committee and their presentation, all the hard work they do to keep our community and streets looks good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gail.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you as well. Also, could you extend well wishes to Paige for everybody on the council, please?
I will. I see her quite often, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys. And I want to thank, you know, Gail, Amy, Darlene, and Mara, who, I don't know if they're here tonight, but we have a, who's the fifth member again? We have five?
Mara.
No, I got Mara.
Paige.
Paige, right, right. So you guys, a lot of you have been on it for a long time, and...
I've been on it for a long time.
Right? So, and a thank you to all the organizations that they mentioned, the Galt Youth Commission and Cal Waste, of course, some of their representatives in this. Thank you for being a part of the Community Cleanup Days. We really appreciate that with having Jack out there with the little truck and all that stuff. We really are happy you guys are a partner with that. So, thank you, guys, for all you do. All right, moving on to item H, public comment.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the City Council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the City Council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency, public comments may also be submitted, as noted above, via the options listed on the first page of the agenda, for providing live public comment prior to the meeting via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org by 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting, which will be distributed to City Council, made part of the official minutes, and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting, but will not be read out loud.
All right, do we have any public comment this evening? Good evening, Mr. Brosman.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for your opportunity to speak. First, I wanted to thank Mr. Hines for having the Galt University founding it, found a lot of information out of it, really enjoyed coming. And the cool thing is you're able to ask a lot of questions out of citizen and find out answers versus a lot of times just sitting in here and picking up pieces. The other part of that, though, that did come out is law enforcement. And I know this month, we've got to push on increased traffic violations or enforcement of violations. One of the things that was interesting out of the meetings that we had was that the number of tickets or citations issued in the city of Galt so far are a little less than 1,300, so averaging five a day. Now, recently, you might have seen, you know, police departments posting some information on number of citations they've been offering or doing recently with the Crosswalk snap. I believe that count was 27. What I would suggest to the council is I really don't want to see a quota system, but I believe we did take our eye off of traffic enforcement, and I believe we need to keep our eye on traffic enforcement. I'll compliment the Chief of Police for initiating this, but the other side of it, we have been averaging five a day. He offered or wrote 27 in one day. So somewhere in between, I think, wouldn't be a bad idea to keep us where we are, keeping our citizens safe. And I'd really like to see the feedback on the schools because I know that's previously been brought up by numerous citizens as concerned. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brosman. I think the counter wasn't going on the public comment either, though, just to let you know. All right, do we have any additional public comment?
No public comment.
Okay. All right, moving on to item I, reports by City Council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Nothing to report tonight, Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Papano?
I've not had any meetings since our last council meeting. However, next Thursday, the 27th, is the Metro Air District Board meeting, and I won't be able to attend due to work, so if Councilmember Vandenberg is available to sit in on that, I will forward the agenda and Zoom link.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right. Councilmember Vandenberg?
I attended a Citizens Crown Water Authority meeting. It's just moving forward on finalizing applications for, what's the grants? And the other really item that caught me off guard, or not off guard, or maybe of concern is that the tunnels that everybody, well, the farmers dislike the most is been rebranded, repackaged, and is moving down the pipeline to finish within 20 years. They want to move a lot of water still locally, but eventually, realistically, it's for the South. Our district supervisor was at the meeting because he's on the board, and he is not getting answers or very few answers from people higher up. And the state is reluctant to have in-person public meetings. Instead, they're having virtual meetings, which basically no one is attending, so it's going a little too far under the radar for my, in my opinion. And I just wanted to make sure that was out in public and help people understand a little bit. And that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilman Lozano?
Yeah, I have nothing to report. I do have a SECOG Board meeting this Thursday, and I'll report out on that. I also did want to mention real quick, October 26th, we're having an unmet needs transportation meeting here at 1:00 in the chambers. It's an opportunity for the community to come out and talk about public transportation and/or other transportation that is needed in the city so that we can get that on the radar of our SECOG partners and encourage them to provide some additional revenue and/or resources and services to us.
All right. For myself, I actually did not have any meetings, official meetings to report over the last two weeks. So with that, we will move on to item J, which is our consent calendar. It is recommended that items 1 through 8 be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. Is there anything, any of the council would like to pull from the consent? Okay. Well, with that, a reminder, we did pull item J4, which is the ADU municipal code adoption. It's going to be pushed to a future meeting. So with that, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the following items. J1 is the minutes of the regular meeting of October 4th, 2022. Item 2 is the receiving file warrants for the period ending October 6th of 2022. Item 3 is accounts receivable write-off period, write-off report, I'm sorry, of uncollected accounts for fiscal years 2021 through 2022. And item 5, set a public hearing date for the new organics recycling rates and rate adjustments. Item 6, Galt Youth Commission bylaws. Item 7, the appropriation of $97,997 for holiday season decorations for Parks and Rec Department. And number 8, public education and governmental fund grant. Do I have a motion to approve those seven items?
Move.
Moved by Councilman Vandenberg, seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papano?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Consent calendar is approved 5-0. Moving on to item K, scheduled matters, notice of public hearing. Do we have any this evening?
None this evening.
All right. On to our regular calendar, item L. First item is going to be from the Human Resources Department. It is the resolution approving the Memorandums of Understanding between the City of Galt and the Galt Police Officers Association, Galt Public Service Unit, and update the Personnel Manual. The report is by Ms. Van Steine tonight.
Yes. Can you hear me? Good evening, Council. I'm here to present the GPOA, GPSU Bargaining Unit Memorandums of Understanding and an updated Personnel Manual. The GPOA represents the Galt Police Officers Association, so that includes your recruits, your police officers, and sergeants. The Galt Public Service Unit represents various job classifications throughout the city, including public works employees, parks and recreation employees, finance department, and other administrative staff employees. We do also have some recommended updates to our city's Personnel Manual, which represents and covers unrepresented employees. Before you, and the resolution tonight does include updated salary schedules for the GPOA and GPSU bargaining units only. And the resolution also authorizes an amendment of the fiscal year 22-23 budget and allows the city manager to carry out those changes. By way of background, the GPOA and GPSU MOUs both expired this year on June 30th. Beginning in April this year, city representatives, including myself and a labor representative, started meeting with GPOA and GPSU labor representatives beginning in April. We had about seven meetings with both of those bargaining units, and we did reach a tentative agreement with those units. Both units subsequently had a vote with their members, and the members did ratify the MOUs. The signed copies of those MOUs were attached to the staff report this evening as well. And for both of the MOUs, both parties have agreed to a three-year contract term with the city. So it starts effective July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2025. Some of the key highlights to both of the bargaining unit MOUs, for GPOA and GPSU only, it does include base pay increases for each of the three years of the contract. It's a minimum of 2% per year. There are some additional adjustments that are higher for certain job classifications that were undermarket, and we're hoping this will increase our market competitiveness for recruitment and retention purposes. The MOUs do include retroactive pay on base pay only, back to the pay period beginning July 4th, 2022. So that's the first pay period after the July 1st MOU effective date. For GPOA only, in the third year of the contract, their members agreed to redirect 29 cents per hour of their salary and convert it towards a $50 per month city contribution towards a health reimbursement account. And a health reimbursement account allows those members to use those funds as an active employee, but also as a retiree. So if they separate and retire from the city, they have some funds available to pay for medical expenses. For GPSU, we do have some changes to their certification incentives. That's included in Exhibit B of the GPSU MOU. The last time the incentives were updated was, I think, 2010 or 2011. So it did require quite a few updates. You'll see a lot of red line changes. But we wanted to make sure that the city is incentivizing the correct certifications. So some of the changes that you see are to incentivize a pesticide qualified applicator certificate or license. You know, we need someone in the Parks Department that has that certificate, also public works benefits from that. We have certain individuals that we want to incentivize to keep getting their water, wastewater, or collection certifications. Community development also has code enforcement, those type of, and permit technician certifications, and also our facilities and parks maintenance staff as well. Some of the changes for both bargaining units and also Personnel Manual updates, and again, the Personnel Manual covers the unrepresented employees at the city. We have some cleanup language items, just to be consistent with current payroll practices. There's also some amendments to ensure we're in compliance with state or federal regulations, some CalPERS changes, those kind of things. Effective January 1st, 2023, the city will set our medical premium contribution to cover or pay 80% of the Kaiser Plan premium, and we have agreed to continue this 80% coverage through 2025. So it will be for the lifetime of the three-year contract term of the MOUs. Both bargaining unit members for GPOA and GPSU will receive a one-time payment, and this is going to be covered through ARPA funding that the city has received. For GPOA members, they'll receive $2,500 per person, and for GPSU, they will receive $2,000 per person. We also are amending the MOUs and the Personnel Manual to adjust our vacation accrual for certain new hires that come to the city that have four years or more of prior police officer experience or public experience working for another government agency. They will start to accrue at 120 hours per year, and we're hoping that this will increase our recruitment efforts to get lateral police officers or other public service candidates to take our supervisory or mid-management positions at the city. And then there also is a change in the Personnel Manual to allow vacation cash out of up to 80 hours per year versus just 40 hours per year. And then finally, the financial impact, this is in the staff report as well. For the first year of both MOU contracts and including the unrep changes, it's almost $623,000, and this is all funds. This isn't a general fund, but this is all funds. The staff report does provide a breakdown of the charges to each city fund based on the accounts associated with employee salaries. So for example, the GPSU bargaining unit covers many of the public works employees, and a lot of their salaries are charged to utilities or other accounts. And as I mentioned, the one-time payments for POA and GPSU will be paid through the ARPA funding that the city has received. So those are the summary details of the changes. I would like to thank Mike Little, the GPOA president, and also Destin Watson, the GPSU president, and their respective boards for being cooperative with the city throughout the negotiation process. And at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you, Ms. Van Steine. Council, questions for Ms. Van Steine? Go ahead.
Just a couple of quick questions. Thank you, first of all, thank you for your work on this, and thank you to the leadership of both of the bargaining units. And I appreciate the thorough report and the both redlined copy and then the other. That was very helpful. I have just a quick question because most of the questions have been answered by yourself.
Okay.
The one question I need to have answered is the health reimbursement account for, it looks like GPOA only, is that compensable with PERS? How does that work?
No. So it'll be a, each month, the city will take $50 per member. We have to actually set up with a third-party administrator, so we haven't done that yet. We have a couple of years to do that because it doesn't start till the third year of their contract. But we simply just transfer $50 a month on behalf of each of their active members, and it goes into an account, and they'll actually get a debit card, just like a flexible spending account, similar to that. And they can use that credit card to use for any medical expenses, or they can just keep the money in the account if they would like to do that.
Health reimbursement account and a health savings account, are those one and the same?
No, they're different. A health savings account, you have, it has to be combined with a high deductible plan, and the IRS defines that.
Okay.
Currently, none of our medical plans are high deductible.
Okay. So just for clarification, 29% per hour, and we're basing that on a 160-hour work month, that's like 40...
2,080 hours in a year.
Okay.
Yeah.
So roughly, it's 46-40 is what they'll be paying out of their check, and then the city will be picking up 60 cents.
Well, the way we calculated it, it was equivalent to $50 a month.
Okay.
So we backed into that to come up with the 29 cents.
Okay. I just used rough 1.60 a month.
Usually 1.66.67, I think, per month.
Ah, got it.
Yeah.
I got away with, without working that, without working six, six hours a month. And just a statement, I'd like to hear public comment if we have any, but just a statement, and I know this was kind of, this process was lengthy, and, but the statement I want to make is that I know both sides agreed to extend beyond, and you and I have had this conversation, so this isn't anything new, Stephanie. Both sides agreed to extend beyond the contract, the previous contract of June 30th, and continue that contract until a settlement occurred. I am, from a labor perspective, I just want to make sure that we do whatever we can to get those contracts settled prior to the expiration of the contract. And again, it is a little more that, at least to me, than extending a contract. It's, it is working without a contract. And so, and again, I'm not putting any blame anywhere because I know there were some circumstances that, that made them go a little longer, so I certainly will do my best to, from policy decision perspective, to assist with that. But I would appreciate consideration of that as we move forward, from both sides.
Sure, understood.
Tina, do we have any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Okay. Any other council members?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to state real quick to all the bargaining units involved, thank you for your patience. It's not, certainly not the way I would have preferred it. For whatever reason, that is the way it went, and I'm glad to see it's finally done. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, first of all, I thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, Mr. Hines, and thank you, Mr. Little, and thank you, Mr. Watson. This is the negotiation, and I was very happy, you know, we come up to the agreement. It was a delay, but I believe in God, don't blame nobody, it's everybody. It was a delay, but I believe in God, don't blame nobody, everybody is, because this is a process we have to go through. So finally, I'm very happy, you know, we end up at an agreement. And this is, I don't have no question, because it's self-explanatory, there's 300 pages, this MOU. And thank you, thank.
Kevin? All right, yeah, I just want to echo what some things have been said here. Obviously, the process took longer than we thought. There was times where, you know, the council didn't meet for almost two months. But our team was working behind the scenes meeting, and so we tried to get, accomplish what we could as quick as we could. But I'm glad that we came to an agreement, and I think what we came up with was fair for both sides. And we do appreciate the patience from the Police Department and the GPSU. And I'm glad we got that behind us, and we're moving on to the other items. So unless there is any public comment, which there's not, and no further comment from counsel, we'll be looking for a motion to approve, a motion to adopt the resolution approving the Memorandum of Understanding MOU with GALT Police Department Association GPOA for the period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th of 2025, and the GALT Public Service Unit GPSU for the period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th of 2025, and update the Personnel Manual revised salary schedules for GPOA and GPSU, and number two, authorizing the amendment of the fiscal year 2022-23 budget to fund salary and benefit adjustments and other related changes. So moved? Moved by Councilman Lozano, seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Resolution approved 5-0.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item two from our public, I'm sorry, from our Public Works Department. Going to be the approval of the First Amendment to amend and restated Collection Services Agreement with California Waste Systems LLC and a ground lease for a solid waste transfer station. Mr. Selling?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I may. I just have a written statement. I need to recuse myself from this item out of an abundance of caution due to income interest in power development group. Mr. Hines, please let me know when the item is done, and I can rejoin the meeting.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Mike Sowing, your Public Works Director. Couple of documents before you tonight. One is the First Amendment to the amended and restated Collection Services Agreement. And the second document that kind of goes hand in hand with that is a ground lease, a proposed ground lease for a transfer station. So I'm going to go through a presentation that I've made to the council before, back on, I think it was August 2nd. And then we also did a workshop on August 18th. There's a lot of pertinent information in here, maybe just as a refresher for at least the council and the community as well. So some of it I'll kind of skip over, it's not so relevant, but I think there's a fair amount in here, just to kind of cover this, and then we can take any questions. So with that, we'll get started. Maybe just to start off quickly, as far as organics, what and why? So organics are essentially food scraps, lumber, paper, other types of, you know, yard waste materials. These are all things that are fall under the organics definition. Apologize for the ring there. And then, as far as why we have to do this, back in 2016, you may recall that Senate Bill 1383 was passed by the California Legislature, and essentially, that required organics to be pulled from the waste stream and recycled. And the reason for that, the why on that, is that these organics, when they're put into the landfill, they break down over time and create methane and other gases, or greenhouse gases, or called GHGs, is the acronym. And those greenhouse gases are essentially attributed to climate change, so. So this is an attempt by the legislature to reduce the impacts of climate change. And so, as far as what's changing, households and businesses must now separate these organics for all residents, and some businesses, that means that these organics will go into their yard waste carts, again, those that have them. For most businesses, because they generate more organics, it will mean a separate bin or dumpster. And so essentially, what this boils down to is you're going to be putting your food waste and these organic materials into your yard waste cart for residents, and then a separate organics recycling container for businesses. All other garbage will still go into your gray trash cart or dumpster. I'm going to skip over the exceptions, not really relevant to these documents, but there are some exceptions. So in response, the city and Cal Waste entered negotiations about a year ago. Through that process, services were looked at in an effort to help reduce the cost impact to ratepayers, while at the same time staying compliant with the state law. And so what you see here is a list of the items that were looked at and the approximate amount of savings that could be applied. And I want to kind of hit the pause button, because when I say a year ago, that's when the council appointed Mayor Farmer and Councilmember Lozano to form an ad hoc committee to negotiate on behalf of the city and the council. So what you see there is approximately $156,000 from residential cart migration savings. That was an item that was agreed to, to be applied toward, you know, essentially reducing the impact of these organic requirements. The city agreed to waive a portion of its franchise fees on the organic service. Well, the franchise fees entirely on the organic service, I should point out, and then an additional portion of the franchise and admin fees overall. And then the city, yeah, I touched on that. That was about 25%, and that's about $182,000, as you see there. There were a couple of items that were discussed at these negotiations that were not agreed to, and that was consideration of eliminating or having a reduced, or having a rate, a reduced rate on the handy haulers. Currently, under the contract, all residents receive one free handy hauler service per year, and then also on the bulky waste pickup. So again, elimination of that or a reduced rate. And all those were considered and rejected through the negotiations. There's a few other things that'll provide some relief, too. One of the things is a proposed transfer station that would be owned and operated by Cal Waste, and I've got some other slides where I'll kind of get into further detail on that. But the transfer station, it would be proposed to be located out at the city's wastewater treatment plant facility and property approximately up to 20 acres would be leased to Cal Waste for that purpose. And the lease revenue there is about $84,000 per an appraisal that was done by the city annually. And through the negotiations, Cal Waste agreed to match that in kind. So $84,000 rent from the city's side, and then $84,000 in kind match from the Cal Waste side for a total of $168,000. The transfer station would be open to the public, and that means reduced trips, obviously, for local folks. They don't have to drive as far, so they've got some savings in time and the costs, obviously, of going to Kefir or wherever else further out. And then by consolidating the various types of recyclables and organics, et cetera, into the larger full-size trucks, the, you know, the semi-trucks, if you will, that provides a greater scale of economy. And so that means greater fuel and maintenance and labor efficiencies. So all of that translates to helping to reduce the impact of these organics services. And then there's some air emission benefits as well, and less traffic congestion. So as far as what does all that mean to the ratepayers, this is kind of how it breaks down. It's approximately a 20% reduction in commercial trash and recycling rates. And then on the residential side, it's a little over 22%, almost 22 and a half percent reduction of the new organics rate that we're looking at. And that's a $9 per month charge, and it's going to be phased in over three years, is what's proposed. $4.50 the first year, $3 the second year, and $1.50 the third year. So that's the overall kind of cut-to-the-chase numbers that we're looking at. And so as far as, you know, the contribution side, I've touched on this a bit, but I want to, you know, just review it a little bit more. So the organics rates for residential are proposed to phase in over the three years, as I mentioned. What that translates to is about $45,000 the first year, $91,000 the second year, and I think it's about 109 the third and fourth years of this. So, and then it would be evaluated annually thereafter. Next, you see the city's lease from the property, that's the 84,000 that I mentioned. And then the overall 25% reduction in the franchise fee and admin fees, that's, has a value of about $182,000. On the Cal Waste side of the ledger, residential rates are being phased in, again, over the three years. That's about a $551,000 contribution there. The commercial rate phase in is about $103,000, and that's from the previous contract that was approved in 2018-19. And then, as far as phasing in the new residential organics rates, that's about $704,000, as you can see there. And then you can also see the Cal Waste match of the 84,000 that I mentioned. So as far as the rates, these would be, well, these are the rates currently right now. And you can see those there. Most folks have the 64-gallon size, so that's why that's highlighted in blue. Of the, I think there's around 8,200 accounts or so, Cal Waste may correct me, but I think about 6,400 of those accounts are in that 64-gallon size, just to give you, you know, how predominant that size is as far as this goes. And so looking at the new residential rates and services, what you see here on this chart is, again, on the left side, the $40.42, and I'm really just focusing on that 64-gallon size there. You can see with the first four, there's a $4.50 increase, as I mentioned, in the first year, with the other savings that we talked about from both the city and Cal Waste sides. Then you can see what are the projected rates. And I want to emphasize here, there's a footnote there at the bottom in the blue, basically that there's a 5% annual CPI adjustment that's factored into the numbers that you see here. Now, we don't know what the CPI is obviously going to be in the coming years. That's just kind of a conservative, you know, approach to projecting what the rates might look like. So these aren't actual hard and fast numbers, again, I want to stress that. But that would be, you know, something, just to give folks a sense of what this thing may turn to as we, as we go into those forward years. And then I've just got a graph here that kind of shows where we fall. The red bars are showing where rates currently are, basically 21, 22. This is a little bit dated information now at this point. But, and then the orange bars are showing the respective where the city of GALT and our competitors would be, again, assuming that 5% annual CPI adjustment out to the 26, 27 year. One update that I want to point out on this chart is, when we presented this back in August, both to the public and at council here, we didn't have the orange bar on the city of Lodi. And you can see that that's there now. What's occurred since then is the city of Lodi have been, city of Lodi and Waste Management, I believe is their contract hauler, have been negotiating, and there was a proposed $5 kind of across-the-board per month increase. And what I understand, that was supposed to be on the council's agenda, I think, tomorrow night, actually, but there was a post about a week ago that it's basically been retracted now, and I guess there's some further negotiations going on. So, but anyway, based on what we knew prior, that $5 a month, and then projecting that out again at that same CPI adjustment, you can see where Lodi comes relative. And that's pretty consistent with, if you look at the red bars comparing Lodi to us now and further out. So they'll, they'll be probably a little more expensive than we will be, too, so. So on the commercial side, here's the commercial rates, and this is, you know, just a quick snapshot. There is a litany, I can tell you, of rates for various sizes and frequencies of service. The Cal Waste has, you know, extensive tables for all those rates, but these are essentially once per week for the various 1 through 6 cubic yard sizes on the trash and recycling. And the next page is basically looking at just the trash side. Again, what's current on the left, and then looking forward as the years go by. And on the commercial side, I want to point out that in 2018, the franchise agreement between the city and Cal Waste at that point had commercial organics recycling rates built in. Those rates are not changing, they stay the same. So the savings that was negotiated between the city and Cal Waste on the commercial side are being applied toward the trash and recycling rates. So when you look on that March 23 number, you see it drop down, and then you see it in the next three years start to build back as the CPI is applied year over year. And again, these are all just based on that same 5% CPI, which again, is speculative, it's just there for illustrative purposes. I might have hit something wrong there. Nope, the recycling, okay. So on the recycling rates, the same thing here, the rates drop in '23 and then start to build back. Maybe, let's see, did I, oh, yeah, the commercial organics. So these are those rates that were in the original agreement back in 2018, and those are not changing, so. So this is just a quick restaurant example on the commercial side to kind of, you know, provide some context, if you will. Basically, two charts, the left chart showing for this particular business, and this is just a theoretical example, but they've got a total of 12 cubic yards of service there. You can see 6 cubic yards of trash, 6 cubic yards of recycling, no food waste currently, and what the rates are and what they're paying a month there, a little under $1,900 a month. And so with the percentage reduction in the trash and recycling rates, you can see that those numbers have gone down. And then also, what's occurring here, the trash is no longer a 6-cubic-yard service, but a 4-cubic-yard service, because we're showing 2 cubic yards of food waste or organic service. So they still have a total of 12 cubic yards of service, but we've now, we've got the organic rate in there. And so you can see that at a 4-cubic-yard trash bin, there's a reduction in the size, but also, again, that same roughly 20% reduction, again, on the trash and recycling. So what it ends up in this particular example is a little over $400 a month savings for a business such as this. Now, I want to point out that based on the level of service, the frequency, you know, times per week on trash or recycling and whatnot, these numbers, you know, these savings can vary. But again, this is just a fairly, I think, representative example, so. So on the transfer station, and I've got a map next to kind of show the locations for everybody. But one thing, just to kind of, you know, make sure everybody understands, a transfer station is not a landfill. A landfill is essentially a lined hole or pit, if you will, where trash is essentially placed and filled in and covered. They have to meet, you know, various state requirements for that. But that's the, you know, final resting place, if you will, for a lot of trash that's disposed after recyclables and whatnot are pulled out. A transfer station, on the other hand, what Cal Waste essentially currently operates now and would propose to operate with this new ground lease facility would be to, basically where they collect it in all their collection trucks, those collection trucks go out there to the site, they're dumping on what's called a tipping floor. It's basically a large covered area where the material is sorted and into different bins. Trash goes to the landfill, recyclables, you know, go to the various facilities that process those different types of recyclables. So this is not where your trash is going to end up if this transfer. if this transfer station lease is approved. So just to kind of stress on that. So the other thing is it would be open to the public daily. So that's for all Galt residents and, you know, the surrounding area to haul any excess waste that they may have, do-it-yourselfers, contractors and the like, as far as where it'll be built. And I've got a map, like I said, I'll show you where that is and when. We estimate about a two-year timeframe to go through what's called the entitlement process, the planning permitting process, if you will. So in this ground lease, there is a two-year period allowed for that. There are up to three sixty-day extensions. So if, you know, if there's a snag for some reason. The other thing that I would point out on that is that there is a ten thousand dollar charge for each extension, should it go longer than that. So that's as far as the timeframe for that. And here's the map, basically showing the location where it's generally proposed here. And again, this would depend on, you know, engineering coming up with a layout and whatnot for it. But the city's treatment plant facility, and I'm going to, hopefully this will show up. So this is the city's treatment plant facility property, and just kind of the rough outline of it here. And then we would propose to put it in that southwest quadrant there. So kind of touching on the benefits, and there's quite a few benefits to doing this. It's obviously a convenient location, you know, for folks to haul their materials, I touched on, shorter trip. And this will accept various waste types, the green waste, you know, gardeners and whatnot, demolition debris from contractors, homeowners, any excess waste junk, all those kinds of things. This will obviously help the city to maintain a cleaner appearance, which attracts business and whatnot, good for the city's image. It's an opportunity also, and Cal Waste has indicated that they would seek these, being able to accept these different types of waste in their permits with the state. But household hazardous waste, that's all your paints and garden products, cleaners, et cetera, universal waste, batteries, fluorescent light tubes, medical sharps and medications, electronic waste from computers, TVs, and all those kinds of things with computer chips and boards in them, and other hard-to-dispose items. You can see some of the bulky items, appliances and the like, mattresses, fluids from vehicles, that kind of thing, so. So all those kinds of things would potentially be accepted at this facility. And then just kind of continuing on, there's obviously some air quality impacts and reduced traffic, as I've mentioned before, shorter trips. And then, once built, Cal Waste estimates that this would potentially employ up to additional twelve positions, so twelve jobs. Utilization for the city, you know, a little bit selfish here, myself, for public works and parks, we have a lot of waste, and right now, Cal Waste comes and picks it up. So we could just self-haul that there, and that would save some money in that aspect. And then obviously, the overall goal of the state to hit this seventy-five percent recycling mandate, this would definitely help the city and the community do its part toward that goal. And kind of hopefully wrapping up here, a few other benefits. Cal Waste has long been very good about providing an educational program for school students, and this would continue, community groups as well, help them, you know, to form and continue relationships with various nonprofits, those types of folks. And then potentially even one day, instead of having to haul off these organics to another facility after they sort it, they would potentially have the ability to process that organic waste on-site. So I know that that's something that they're looking into. So that, I think, I'm getting close here. So, yeah, this is pretty much wrapping up at the end here. But as far as how does that affect it? Well, we already talked about the rent from the property, that would definitely affect it, the rates to the good, and then operational efficiencies from having a larger facility where they can, like I said, get those efficiencies from the larger loads and whatnot. And obviously, this would also give them some flexibility to control future rate increases, because it would give them that ability to determine, you know, where is the best, cheapest place, if you will, where they have to haul recyclables or organics for whatever time period that may be. So it gives them some greater flexibility, which in turn should, you know, help control rates here. And then, you know, the question, obviously, as far as if there were no transfer station, what would the rates potentially look like there? And while we didn't really get into a super in-depth analysis of that from the limited work that was done, we estimate that would probably be about a fifty percent increase to what we're talking about now. So with that, I've got a scheduled slide. So obviously, tonight, we're talking about these documents here. And then if approved by council, we would move forward with the process, doing continued informational outreach, which city staff have already been doing since this is going to become effective for the city January first of twenty-three. And then the recycling service for all residential and commercial accounts would start essentially by the end of December, essentially by January first. And so that way, we could be compliant with the state mandate. And with that, that wraps up my presentation, Mayor and Council. I'm here to answer any questions.
So, Mr. Mayor, before we proceed, Director Selling, is it okay to have members from Cal Waste come up and actually provide just some commentary on their side of the negotiations? And also to give council a little background on how this SB eighty thirteen eighty-three has affected their business and their operations? So folks can get some context for why this process was so complicated and why it actually results in a slight increase in rates? And I think it's their best to kind of address that, if that's okay with you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. And actually, when you're done, if you would maybe stay up here by, like, one of the front chairs with a mic, because I think a couple of questions we have may actually have to be answered by one of y'all. So instead of you having to walk back and forth to the dais, it'd be helpful. So Mike could be there, and you could be, yeah, yeah. Well, I'm saying, you could speak here, but after you're done making your comments, maybe stick around, because I think, gonna need you there for a couple of questions.
All righty, thank you.
Hello, everybody, I'm Rudy Vacarezza, Cal Waste. You get me tonight. But, yeah, so Mike gave a good presentation, and it is a fairly complicated proposal that we're putting in front of you. Mike tried to simplify it as best he can, but what he's saying on a residential basis means that now, instead of two commodities that you're putting out every week, now every other week, you're going to have to put out all three carts. So this means that once every other week, you're going to have to put out your trash, your recycling, and now it's no longer green waste, it's actually a mixed organics cart. So your food scraps are no longer going to go in your trash can. They're going to go into your green waste can. And that green waste can will be picked up every single week. So what that means for us is it requires the resident to get, at the minimum, twenty-six additional services every year, which means there's a third truck that's going to need to be on the road to collect that third can that's out there every week. So with that said, we're adding equipment on the road, we're adding another driver. I mean, these additional services don't just happen. Currently in Galt, we run split-body trucks to collect the two commodities that are out on the street today. But we will have to run a, in a, two additional trucks at a minimum to pick up the rest of the community's third cart that's out that week. So that is what is part of this additional needed rate increase to accomplish this goal. The other part of this is that what was in your green waste cart before was sent to a facility that can no longer accept the green waste that now has the additional food waste in it. And in addition to food waste, there also is food-soiled paper and, you know, other than food waste that is accepted in this product. I think this week, the city was passing out some pails that they received a grant for that is going to kind of be how you consolidate that in your kitchen and then take it out to your now green waste cart that will be your mixed organics cart. So it's a lot of things going on at once, but it's not just the addition of collection service that is needed. It's the kind of entire infrastructure behind that now green cart that is being restructured in California. And every community throughout the state, including special district, is having to deal with this right now. So you're not unique in that function. And with that said, I think we've sat down with the officials in the special committee that's been appointed, and we've had some good talk about the things that can be given or taken to try to minimize the effect on the resident. But, you know, at the end of the day, there's about another fifty percent more service needed every other week, which, you know, comes out to about a third more, a third larger operation needed behind it, and the post-processing side of the world has doubled. And, you know, the version of getting this transfer station to accompany this new organics collection is really gets what's going to allow us as Cal Waste to control those costs in the future. Right now, we're taking that material all the way up to Yolo County to be processed, which is, when I say that material, I mean the mixed organics. So that's green with the food waste in it. By having this transfer station in town, it's going to really allow us to kind of control our destiny and control some costs and consolidate these loads. You know, there's other elements to this. Couple of years ago, we did a large cart swap-out, so the city is within the requirements of the new colors that are associated with the new carts. But each cart is now required to have a graphical representation of what can go in the cart, which you guys currently have now. But in order for us to keep that, we are going to have to swap out the cart lids on the now green cart to now say that it's no longer a green waste cart, it's a mixed organics cart as well. You know, there's a huge public outreach effort that's going to be needed to do this, just from the behavior of putting out two carts a week to three carts every other week is going to be a challenge. I think as well, we're going to be, I guess you could say, inundated with a lot of phone calls. There's a lot of requests by the state that are involved with this, such as audits around that actual waste stream. We'll be required to do random route audits throughout the year, which is going to require almost a whole new position and a half of people driving around, flipping the lids of carts within the city. I'm fully aware of the oddness of that, but something that's required by the state, and it's in this new agreement that we have with the city, the state actually requires that it's specified to largely. So, yeah, I mean, you know, when it comes to, you know, we're not coming in here and asking for a rate increase, and we're not trying to get an increase based on, you know, fuel consumption or anything going up. This is just on the new addition of these twenty-six services that each resident's going to get every year. And, you know, the partnership with the city on getting this transfer station associated with that has been able to reduce this nine-dollar additional rate requirement that we are phasing in over three years. I mean, we're going to have the first, that nine dollars, we're going to have the first year of expenses in that year, but we are spreading it out over three years to get that from the resident. But, you know, the negotiations we've had with the city is going to reduce that impact to, you know, if you kind of look on the rate sheet in the agreement, I mean, I think we're asking for ninety-nine cents the first year. I think you're getting a reduction in the second year and an additional forty-ish cents in the third year. So that rate has been severely modified from what was a nine-dollar rate. And that's sort of all coupled with the transfer station being part of this new agreement. And I would say that each municipality is going through the same thing right now. You guys are not unique, and each one's looking for their own way to control their own destiny. And you just have to have a way to handle that material without just sending it to the next county, which is what we're doing today. So that's kind of all I have, unless there's specific questions, I'll stand right here and...
Yeah, there might be, so maybe just hang out in case there are. But I would like to start off this by saying, because as it was mentioned, myself and Councilman Rosano were appointed, actually, we volunteered, I think, if I recall correctly. We came on an eighteen, you know, in the wake of an unpopular garbage contract, and we kind of saw the fallout of that. And so I think we felt it was our duty to kind of step up and try to be a part of this process. And it's been almost a year now, you know, a lot of meetings with a lot of Cal Waste folks, our staff, Mr. Hines, Mr. Selling, our legal staff, and additional legal staff. You know, I remember, I don't think there was ever more than, less than ten people in the meeting, Zoom and on the table and everything. And, you know, we, it wasn't easy, you know, there was some back and forth and, you know, but, you know, nobody got roughed up too bad in there. But it was a tough negotiation on both sides. But I think what, just to kind of lay it out there for kind of how this worked for everybody was, it was like, we came to an agreement on what a price, what we thought the rate increase was going to be. And again, a lot of it early on was hypothetical, because it was like a moving target the whole time. I mean, each time we met, over a month would go by, and we would get new information. And our staff was working hard, coming and saying, hey, we just found out that El Grove's talking about this, and this is the latest with that. And so we were constantly monitoring other municipalities about what was going on and what they were doing. But even the rules of what was being asked of you guys was changing, you know. They were like, well, we're going to put the food waste in a bag, and the bag is going to go in the trash. And then, well, maybe we're not going to do that, maybe we're just going to put it in the green waste. I mean, and we were watching to see what everybody else was going to do. And it was really just, you know, I mean, it was kind of funny, because it's like they're mandating this, but yet there wasn't really a lot of strict, some things were like, you have to do this, this, and this. And then we would ask some questions, they're like, well, they said you can just do it however you want. It's like, what, really? It was just so strange. So, you know, what we did is we come up with a price that we felt, and again, with supporting data from our staff. And then we looked at that and said, okay, you know, what can we do to mitigate that cost? We want to make this as least impactful to citizens as possible. And so through a multitude of things, you know, going on, contributions from Cal Waste, saying, okay, we'll do this, if you guys do this, we'll chip in that. Fine, you know, let's give and take here. And it was just a constant, ongoing thing. You know, my numbers come up to, it's approximately almost a half a million dollars that's being contributed, at least. And that doesn't count, you know, what you mentioned, sir, about having you, what Rudy mentioned about having to put out all that money upfront, and there's a certain loss of revenue by not being able to have those rates fully implemented until year three, right? So there's, obviously, we've seen those numbers, and there's a huge potential loss of revenue there. But not counting that, there's like a half a million dollars that the city's contributing through franchise fees. And we felt, and I know Rich will speak on his own here in a sec, but we felt that, you know, you know, we wanted to try to, in this process of just creating an amendment to the old contract, because also, really, I want to be clear that this is not, we were not renegotiating the old contract. That contract was approved in September of two thousand eighteen, and it still stands. This was an amendment that was required because of the organics implementation. So, but, we were like, well, in the process of this, we can try to mitigate some of, you know, try to offset some of that impact that was caused by that garbage contract. So we were able to do that at the same time. It was kind of like, we're trying to mitigate the new cost of the organics, but also, let's see if we can get some rate relief for businesses that were impacted, you know, by this whole garbage contract. And we were able to do all of that through a multitude of things, which I'm not going to go through there, because Mike covered a lot of them. But it was a lot of moving parts, and there's a lot of give there. So what I just want to say is I appreciate, you know, the work and the willing... So what I just wanna say is I appreciate, you know, the work and the willingness of cow waste, you know, to, to be, to be, to compromise on things that Rich and I were not willing to budge on. And I think that everybody was able to be negotiable and, and come to what was fair. I think it is a very fair agreement. I think it's fair for, first and foremost, I think it's fair for the citizens. That's the most important thing. I mean, I'm looking at rates here, you know, we're talking about, you know, the initial bump was mentioned because we're trying to front load it to help with the initial cost. But, you know, you have a $4.50 bump first year, but then the second year is a dollar. The third year, it actually goes down 50 cents without the CPI, of course, but we have a 50, 51 cent reduction and 30 cents the last year. So we've taken that bump and that dollar amount and reduced it significantly by throwing this money at it from all these different ways. And so I just think that, you know, I just wanna know, we worked really hard at this. You know, we went in there trying to drive the best thing we could for the citizens, but also at the same time, you know, we also were very conscious that cow waste is very important and to the city. And you guys are very generous to the city, you guys have been, and, you know, with your philanthropy and, and things like that. So we also, we understand that a good deal doesn't mean, you know, both parties have to come out with no black eyes. You know, it could be a rough negotiation, but you still have to come out where it's still fair at the end of the day. And I think that it's fair. I, in my opinion. And so, but again, just wanna state, this would not affect the old contract. This is not organics for the, like Mr. Selling mentioned, this is not organics for the businesses. Those rates were never touched and looked at by us. This was only us negotiating what the new residential organics program was going to be. The only thing this has to do with the old contract is the rate relief that we ended up working into this to offset some of that. That's the only thing that has to do with each other, so. Anyways, I just wanna state that. I have some questions, but I'm gonna let my other constituents speak here for other questions. So, Rich, do you wanna?
Yeah, I'd like to go next, if I may. First, I wanna thank my colleagues for, after I enthusiastically threw my hand up and said, let me have a shot at this, and I did. It, it was without a question something that I wanted to do because I saw it as an opportunity to help protect the ratepayers. And, and I won't go over everything that the mayor's gone over, but I will say this. Our staff here at the city, including attorneys, the cow waste staff and their representation, were nothing but professional. And there were some times where, I think on both sides, those of us who have little hair were pulling it out, just because it's the, the nature of what we do, right? And so I think that going into it, at least my mindset, and I know the mayor's was as well, is that we have this ugly beast that we have to take care of and it's called a state mandate. And I was gonna ask the question kind of rhetorically, but I'll just state it. The, the state of California put this mandate on jurisdictions, including businesses, that, and provided little to no support in terms of revenue. And so going into it, I knew we had to look at what skin in the game is the city gonna have to offset some rate increase and what is cow waste gonna put in? And, and I believe that that was kind of the, the theme. And, and so I wanna thank cow waste for all of your community involvement, but, but certainly your professionalism and process that we went through. Again, not a fun thing to do, not, you know, but this is a reoccurring theme since I've been on this council for four years, is unfunded state mandates. But I think what we did was we did our best to get a program put in place with our partner that would affect our ratepayers the least amount. And I think, I think that we got there. And so I, I just have a, a few questions, so I'll let, but I was in the room. But, so I'll let my colleagues go next, as they may have more not being in that process. So again, thank you. Thank you to our staff, thank you to cow waste, and certainly my colleagues for allowing me the opportunity to be one of the, the leaders in this, in this charge.
But one of you, one of you, that you aren't part, you wanna go ahead with your questions first?
Yeah, okay. So first of all, thank you for Mayor Sean Farmer and Councilmember Lizzano, because they are part of the ad hoc committee. I just wanna make sure the public understand, ad hoc committee, there can be only two council member, which unanimously, there can be no more than two council member can negotiate with the cow waste, whatever they negotiate. So unanimously, we make the mayor ad hoc committee, where we point to them to negotiate with the cow waste. And we all know, 2018, I don't have the question, but just Mr. Selling, just for the information, if we do not negotiate this amendment, according to 2018 garbage contract, what kind rate will be in next January? Just, just the approximate, I don't need the exact finger, it's be a double, triple, or one fourth?
You know, we would have to negotiate that. I think the one thing that I would point out is, you know, is if the city and the cow waste did nothing and we just marched into January 23, we would essentially go into a process with the state, an enforcement process. And under the, under the mandate of 1383, we could be fined up to $10,000 a day. So I couldn't really speculate on what, you know, the rates would be. Again, that would be a negotiation, so.
So my next question is, during negotiation, the city put some money in it due to, because we wanna keep the residential and commercial rate down. And the cow waste also help different categories put that money back to the system. So did you, how much money city, did, because we have franchise fees and we also have admin fees?
Yeah, correct. So right now, the city, in the 2018 contract, the city collects a 10% franchise fee and then there's also a 2% administration fee. So, so essentially, that's a total of 12%. In this negotiation, the city essentially waived 25% of that, so 3%. So it's now, what we would look at going forward, if this is approved, would be essentially a 7%, sorry, 8% franchise fee, I believe, and 1% admin. So is that nine? Yeah, nine out of the former 12, I believe.
And, and we're foregoing a franchise fee on the new organics rate?
On the organics, yes. There would be zero franchise fee on the organics, correct? Yes, thank you, Mayor.
All right, and my next question, these two mayor and council member, I see on the report, they eliminate fee annual handy hauler service. That $300,000 could be rejected, could you might be briefed to the public why you, who will reject it, I believe, the city side reject it?
Sure, I mean, I could add some insight to this and then Rich.
And what, why the reason, or did you guys, before make a decision, did you guys approach to the public or?
Right. So I, I can just say my thought, and I, and I think, you know, this was obviously, Rich and I were on the same page many the time, but he can comment after me. So we looked at a lot of things, like, okay, what could we do? What, what about this? What would that do to the rates? And is it worth doing that? What's the value of that to the community? Well, the handy hauler thing was actually brought up a lot. I mean, it, it was, and the bulky waste pickup. Originally, there was a certain amount offered, as if we forego that, well, well, you know, cow waste can basically credit us X amount of dollars. Well, and just speaking for myself, I didn't feel like that was worth what the handy hauler program meant to the community. So then, over a series of negotiations, that number actually did climb. But at the end of it, where it was kind of where we kind of deadlocked on that particular subject, I still personally, and I think Rich and I both, we felt that the, the value of that handy hauler service to the community, and as much as it is, is an asset to the people of Galt and how it's used, again, only a certain percentage of people use it, but even with that, only that small percentage of people that use it, the value of that didn't, wasn't worth us getting that, those dollars. Those dollars that we would have gotten and applied those, sprinkled those onto the rates, it just wouldn't have been a good value. I mean, there's better, you know, a good, there's a good deal and there's a good price. And this wasn't to me, I didn't think it was, that was a good deal. And so we, at some, at one point, Rich and I were just like, you know, the handy hauler thing's just off the table. Is that pretty much?
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much it. I, I would just like to add a couple of things. When we, when we talk about, and the mayor just kind of mentioned it, hit on it a little bit, but when we talk about waiving revenue from cow waste, it's, we, it, it's not waiving the revenue, it's re-appropriating it. So instead of it coming to us and going back to the ratepayer, cow waste held on to it and used that as a credit. So we didn't get it, but it, it went straight to our ratepayer. So I just wanna make that point clear. It wasn't like we were giving up money and then not using it and finding money somewhere else. It didn't, it wasn't that way. But I, I, I will add that, kind of going into this, I knew that some of the services in the, in the contract that we currently have, that were services that cow waste was providing and our residents were receiving for little to no cost, I, I figured those would probably be points of negotiation. And so prior to the first meeting, I met with some community members, business owners, Chamber of Commerce folks about a couple of different things, but, but related to the question about the handy haulers. And what I heard was, we use it, and even if only 25% of our residents use it, you wouldn't believe the amount of people that you talked to that said, yeah, I've been meaning to get that for like four years. When the hell do it? And so the value, like the mayor said, there was a value to the community that we, I didn't feel as though we needed to, to lose. And so I'll just add that piece is that, you know, when listening to the public, both the commercial and the residential, you know, and since we were talking about it during this negotiations, I would go in and tell these guys, I don't know where you're getting this 25% because everybody in my neighborhood has one. It was during the spring. And so obviously, that's gonna be more, a time when more people will have those, so. Vice Mayor, I hope that answers your question. We, it was, it was quite a process.
Not everybody has a truck in town, so even with the transfer station, I mean, you know, some people, the handy hauler's very handy. I mean, it's a great name, you know, to be able to, be able to just walk out in front of your house and throw it in there. But it was just simple economics, really, you know, like if handy hauler's $266 and, you know, 27% of the population are using that, you know, that's roughly like 2,000 users, you just take 277 and you can easily come up with what a value of that is. And we just couldn't agree on that number to, you know, that we're being offered. So, hope that answers your questions.
Thank you, thank you, my colleagues, the explanation, thank you. Mr. Selling, just for the clarification, result of ratepayers, 19.8% on commercial and 22.4% residential, could you, little bit detail explanation on this?
Yeah, hang on a second here, I think I gotta break down on that. Okay, this is where we were talking about it. So on the breakdown of that, first, on the commercial side for the 19.8%, the franchise fee on that piece is about 9.3% is what the value on waiving the franchise fee was. And then the cart migration savings portion, half of that money made up about a little over 5%. It's about 5.12%. And then 9.3 on the franchise fee. And then there was another, just almost 5.4% on the wastewater treatment plant decrease, essentially from the, the rent for that 20 acres. So that 5.4, roughly 5.1 and 9.3, that's what makes up the 19.8% on the commercial side. On the residential side, basically, the franchise fee reduction is about 41 cents and the cart migration savings, again, half of that money is worth about 77 cents a month. And then the transfer station rent, half of that money, again, is about 83 cents per month. So the 83 cents, 77 cents and 41 cents total, when you apply that as a fraction of the $9 increase, that's the 22.4% reduction in the organics recycling cost.
Thank you, Mr. Selling. And on the commercial side is a 20% just only on trash and recycling. We do not need to negotiate on the organic because it's already in the contract?
Correct.
Thank you. The, my next, just the information that transfer station is can be, the land can be a 55-year lease, and what can happen after the end of the lease?
So I think there's a couple of things, and, and I may look to the city attorney to assist or correct me. I believe that the city can renew the lease at that point for another up to 55 years. If the, the city so chose, I think they can give notice to cow waste as the tenant, that the city is not going to renew the lease. And then there is language in the lease that stipulates that cow waste as the tenant can remove the facilities or we can work out some arrangement as to what they remove or what they leave. But with that, I'll defer, does that pretty much cover it or did I miss something?
Yeah, that's pretty much. That's pretty much it. It could be, the parties could negotiate a, a longer lease again after that. Under state law, you can only enter into leases for certain statutory periods of time. So that's why we have a number like that, but there's some flexibility there.
So that negotiation can be after, you know, when we're going close to 55 or we're gonna have that, what can happen when we have the lease agreement?
I would speculate that at some point prior to the lease, you know, coming to an end, that the negotiations would begin so that it would be complete prior to the lease expiring.
Okay. You know, this transfer station, as you mentioned something, it will not stage anything, it can be, these stuff can come in, it can transfer to other landfill, wherever. So that's mean every day he might, we can explain to, so that operation can be every day, can be zero out or they still can be left over for the next day process?
Oh, you wanna take that?
Sure. And so there's, there's pretty strict requirements around transfer stations. You can only hold waste for up to 48 hours and then that waste essentially has to be like turned over and taken to its disposal site or another designated recycler. So whether that's trash, recyclable, green waste, it can't, or organics, it can't sit on a pad for more than 48 hours. And, you know, from the standpoint of the, the organics and green waste, it can sit in one spot until it might be moved to another spot where it does post-secondary processing, where we might be trying to turn that into compost or another type of soil additive. But from a trash perspective, you have about 48 hours to flip that pile and get it to a landfill. And recyclables, you know, we run a MRF in town, we have the same conditions that are held there. We're only able to hold material for up to 48 hours until it's processed. So it sort of is a net zero effect. There's random, I guess you'd say, exemptions given on awkward holidays, but other than that, it's a 48-hour requirement to where it's, goes down to net zero.
Thank you. Mr. Selling, I see in a report somewhere, you get some kind of feedback from county resident or, or Galt resident, can you might be see what kind of feedback you receive after we have outreach?
Okay, yeah, we, we basically fielded some questions along the lines of, how is this going to work? What are the details? I think as, as I think the mayor mentioned at one point, you know, we thought it was gonna be bagged and, and separated in the, in the can and, and then just logistical types of questions, you know, when does this take effect and, and how exactly is the service gonna work, you know? And as far as these food waste pails, which the city got some grant money from the state for, you know, how is that gonna work and what's the? you know, how is that going to work and what's the timing kind of thing? You know, where can I get more information, those types of questions? There were a few questions regarding, you know, things about the rates. You know, how did you guys come up with these? And, and I think even one of the questions that you asked earlier as far as, you know, the handy haulers and, and the bulky waste, you know, and why weren't those, you know, included as well kind of thing? So, and so for, you know, reasons which you've already heard, I think those are the, just of the questions that we received, so.
Thank you, Mike. And again, thank you for the staff, thank you for the cow waste representative, thank you for my constituents, and thank you for Mayor Farmer, Councilmember Lozano, working hard to come up some kind of amendment. And this can be effect on our ratepayers. That's why we, you know, met to beginning of my fourth year term. Thank you, everybody, and I will support that amendment tonight. Thank you.
Kevin, did you have some questions?
I did not have any questions because both this presentation and the prior two and all the materials, I think, informed me more than adequately. One thing I thought was missing from the prior public conversations, which I thank Rudy for kind of bringing out tonight, and as Rich pointed out, the unfunded mandate. You know, I'm confident that the state does not think about what it's going to take to implement these things. And, you know, I had in my head, like Rudy said, it's one-third more pickups. It's added right off the top. So you're talking a 33% cost increase, therefore rate increase. State mandated color of garbage cans. What kind of label has to be on it? We got to redo those. You know, the, the stuff that they require with the zero thought to what it takes to do it. So all that being said, thank you for bringing that out because like I said, I thought that was really lacking in the, in the public discussion. And then my compliments to both sides for the very creative solutions and cooperation to take all of those extra unfunded requirements and come all the way down to this, what I think, under the circumstances, a very reasonable rate increase. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. I just have a few questions if you don't mind, Rich. So, and some of the, some of these can be just very quick, so now those aren't going to be really lengthy. But I do appreciate, prior to the meeting, you guys, Mike and Mr. Hines clarifying the differences because the one graph was showing the $4.50, $3.150, and then the other page was showing the, you know, the $4.50 and then it was the 99.30 we were chatting, it was because the CPI, or I mean, because, because there are, our rate mitigation, I call them, measures were not shown on the one. And then the other one was, didn't show the CPI, so that's why there was some variances. But it made total sense, so I appreciate that. So a couple of questions that I just had real quick is, just to clarify, because I didn't see legal verbiage in the, in the amendment, in the contract amendment, and maybe this is for Mr. Splendario. It's after 2026, there is no longer a rate bump. So I was told that we are just to assume that if we default back to the verbiage in the original contract, which means that rates just continue with just CPI only beyond 26. Because we only have a rate thing if, you know, we're, we're phasing this in till 2026, right? So 27, what happens in 27? So is my understanding that we just revert back to the original and we just, it's a CPI only from that point forward?
Yes, essentially. This is essentially get, this is essentially devised to pay for that bump in price due to the new program that, from the state mandate. After that program is essentially taken care of, it'll, it'll continue with the CPI.
Okay. And these are kind of in no ran, in a particular order, but the new rates according to, they start in March of '23?
Correct.
Okay, so even though the program starts, we have to start with the program in January, the rate pairs will see the, in '23, in March?
Correct.
Okay. So my next question might be for, may be for Rudy. Is there, well, is there any grace period allowed? Because there was some talk and I'm concerned with, what happens if they're not able to implement, like because of, say, a backorder of trucks? Or something they're not able to get in a timely manner come January 1st? We have to have this program in place. Is there any grace period or is there going to be any concessions by Cow Recycle to you guys that they're going to be understanding if you're not able to implement fully because of uncontrollable circumstances? Oh, okay.
Nine to 12 months ago in some cases because that is something that we had to do as an organization. So while there will be a grace period, and I don't think we're going to get the lids put on January 1st. They're going to happen sometime before the March 1st date. That's something that's backed up. But the program will start January 1st, and that's just going to be an added challenge to us about how we communicate that and get that out to all our residents.
And I think that we talked about this where I think as long as they know that we're acting in good faith, they're not going to come out and just like drop the hammer on us. I mean,
Yeah, and I mean, the, the,
We're not going to do it.
The step you're taking tonight is the step that they're looking at
Right.
action on. If this were not to be something that was approved tonight and the city wanted to go down another path, then I think that's when you, we would have to really consider that question.
So my next question is for you and, and Mike and for maybe with Frank. You know, there is, in the lease, in the land lease agreement, there's a, there's a, of course, the rent, and then there's a CIP adjustment each year. And then there's also some incremental, I think it's like a 20-year, 40-year, where we actually could reevaluate the value of the land and make adjustments accordingly. But, but, but basically speaking, there's a CIP and there's, there's verbiage in there where it's going to be no less than 2%, no more than 5%. So the cap is 5%. So they're not going to see any bigger than that. However, on the other side, on the ratepayer side, there is no cap. I mentioned this to Mr. Splendario today. I only brought this up because there was a concern from a citizen where they said, "Oh, my gosh, you know, CIP right now is crazy. You know, you use 5% in your evaluations, but what if it's like 8%? Are the ratepayers going to get dinged, you know, really hard from that?" Mr. Splendario did get back to me and explain that the CPI that we use for this type of thing is not like what you see, like you hear about in the news and stuff, right? So.
Yeah, yeah. I forget the name of it. I can probably look it up pretty quick.
I mean, so we,
Water Sewage Garbage, I believe.
The Water Sewer Trash Index.
Yeah.
And I guess I want to stipulate that there is a cap within this contract.
There is.
The cap is 5%.
Oh, okay.
So we kind of just came back and in turn asked the city to live with the same cap that we live with.
Okay, because I didn't see that, so I apologize. You know, it's like hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pages.
Totally get it. And, and that's why we used 5% in that projection is that is the maximum CPI that you guys will see associated with that rate. So.
Thank you for answering that. And my computer, just hang on a second, my computer just, let me ask you a next question off memory and I'll get my computer back up. There was a, there's some verbiage with the land lease that states that the tenant, which is cow waste, is not able to sublet that land without permission from us. They can't just, you know, go off and sublet it to another garbage organization. That would have to be an agreement that we would mutually agree on, correct?
There is a distinction and, and I'll defer to the city attorney between subletting and assignment. I think what you're referring to would be an assignment. So if they sold their company to a new company, we cannot, you know, withhold it unnecessarily to allow them to transfer it. But what we do have authority is to make sure that if that, you know, company takes over, that they have the financial means to run this operation, that they have the expertise, the, you know, the experience and that kind of thing. But as far as the subletting now, I'm going to defer to this.
Yeah, I think what I'm mainly looking for, Frank, for your answers is like, and again, I'm just, I'm not trying to get in the weeds on this, but this is just me being like super particular about little details and contracts and stuff. Like, let's say the cow waste is like, "Well, you know, we got 28, we have 20 acres. We don't need 10 acres of it." So we're going to, you know, we're going to, we're going to run a swap meet out there for 20. I mean, I know that wouldn't follow with the, with the sequel and all that, but I'm just saying, they, they decide to sublet. I mean, there's also obviously parameters about certain things they could do or whatever, but they could do that. I mean, there is, they have the liberty of.
Yeah, like one hypothetical might be for like a, you know, say a composting operation or an anaerobic digester if there was a company that, you know, that they wanted to sublet five acres of that to, let's say. The contract does allow for that, so.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then a couple more quick ones. So regarding the, the, the actual station itself, so there's verbiage in there about the road maintenance being shared between cow waste and the city, the access road. Because right now our wastewater guys use it, but they're going to.
Correct, yeah.
And with that being said, I was looking at the map and I noticed, you know, that the 20 acres they have is not adjacent to Twin Cities Road. It's kind of set back.
Correct.
So, and it's in that southwest corner. So, and maybe this is early and they haven't even got, you know, maybe they're after CEQA, the environmental stuff, they say, "Well, you can't use that, you have to use that." But do we know, is there any thought to where the access road? Would you guys think you're going to be accessing your facility from the intersection at, at Christiansen and Twin Cities and not actually the road that?
I think what, what we're, I think mutually envisioning would be an extension of Sergeant Road at Twin Cities. And that would be their direct access in. So it would be essentially the north leg of that intersection. I don't know, Rudy, but,
Oh, okay.
And that would keep their traffic separate for, from CDCR traffic going to the ranges, particularly and our guys, you know, for, for the little bit, and as well as the farming operations for the, the farm tenant that we lease to.
Rudy?
Well, I think the way we understand that is, I mean, that would require an easement that would need to be taken to that southwest corner of the property, which we're very much amenable to. But I think as it's, as it's written today in the lease, there's some traffic studies that can be done based on like road usage of the current road. So if we actually did use the Christiansen entrance, like the maintenance of that road is based on trick, truck traffic, which I can tell you is probably going to be 80 to 5% my trucks. So we will probably be responsible for a lot of the road maintenance that goes through that main entrance. And then we'll have to supply the access to that southwest corner. But we, we would like to entertain an access on that, that Sergeant Strip, but I think that's a little longer of a process to, to figure that out.
Yeah, and that, that would probably be worked out through the entitlement process for the project, so.
We just figured that, a lot of this still has to go through planning and, I mean, there's a whole nother process for this.
Getting ahead of myself at that point, this, this could be two years on the road. I'm just, you know, because this stuff is in the contract, I'm just thinking about, I don't want to be like, "Oh, we should have thought of like", I don't know, but that's not really specified. I was just curious as to the maintenance of it and stuff. This one, I kind of already got answered. So there's obviously verbiage built in there that if for some reason, I know that the city, there's some language in there that the cities will do as due diligence with trying to get things approved for this facility to happen. But for some unforeseen, the county steps in or like, you know, they find a spotted owl there that, and then we have, you know, some organization comes in and just wrecks the whole thing. I mean, they obviously are not going to be locked into leasing this property if they're not able to build a facility. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the last, last question I have is, and it's kind of a logistic one, and again, maybe just me thinking, but, you know, thinking about the location of it and, and kind of, you know, your trucks going to that spot, and then you have transfer trucks that would be taking materials out, right? I'm thinking about the Twin Cities roundabouts, and I'm just thinking, have you guys thought about the, the difficulty with tandem trailer transfer truck? Are your trucks tandem trailer at the transfer, or not?
No.
Oh, okay, well then, you know what, my questions are relevant. I was thinking tandem trailers going through roundabouts on a regular basis. I was thinking, wow, that might be tricky. Okay.
I mean, it is something we, we've thought about. I mean, you, you can go down Twin Cities, take Bruce Phil. There's a couple of different ways to go out that way. But we've done the, you know, we take trailers around that roundabout all the time, but it's not a big deal. It's designed for that type of traffic, to be honest.
All right. That was pretty much my specific questions. I mean, you know, we went, I went through this, you know, tried to stay awake for some of it. You know, I went over it again last night, but so many pages and you try to take notes, but a lot of it's been talked about. I appreciate your thoroughness, Mr. Selling and, and Mr. Splendario, and all that was involved with drafting this. I know that there was some part on cow waste side, you know, I'm sure there was some back and forth with the language and stuff and make sure everybody agreed. But I appreciate the thoroughness. It seems very thorough and it's very lengthy on the, both the land lease and the amendment. But Rich, did you have any other questions?
Yeah, just, a lot of it's been covered and I appreciate your work again. Just one last thing, and Mr. Vacares, maybe you can talk about this, is what, what does the, the material recycling facility look like when the, if the, if the transfer station's approved and built? What then happens at the MRF?
So the MRF remains as it functions today. Currently, we have interim temporary transfer station that we run there. When I say interim and temporary, we've ran it for the last seven years. You know, the goal was to always get a transfer station offsite, but we have a very small, non-public transfer station that just our route trucks use today, where that material is transferred and consolidated into larger loads. And, you know, with that said is, there's no added cost of the new transfer station within this proposed agreement because we're already transferring and doing it today. And we've sort of bet on ourselves and know that if we're going to do something else out at the wastewater treatment plant, we're going to do it for less money, if not the same amount of cost that's going to happen today with us. So the material facility, material recovery facility will continue to operate. It's just that the route transfers, the route trucks with both trash and now the organics every week are going to go dump at the new transfer station. The straight body additional recycling trucks that are going to be needed are just going to be able to come right to the material recovery facility.
And I know we spoke a little bit about hazard, household hazardous waste. And currently, for the public's information, our city contracts with the City of Elk Grove to have our residents go and drop off batteries, paint, anything, you know, the list is long. Computers, electronic. So we contract with them, and every time one of our residents goes and shows their ID and, and we have a City of Galt address, they, they backcharge the city. Where, where, I know, I know we spoke about that briefly, and there's some additional permitting and things that need to happen operationally on your side, but where is that at?
So I guess within the lease agreement, I mean, we, we are committing to building a household hazardous waste drop-off facility, drop-off and storage facility at the transfer station. So we are going to provide that to Galt residents and the City of Galt, if you wish to utilize that. You currently, like you said, have an agreement with the City of Elk Grove and, but we, we are committed to building that. And I think it actually states within the lease that we shall accept those types of waste. So, you know, we, hands are tied and we're going to build that there. And the city can choose to utilize that. If not, residents can on a daily basis and, but, but we will have that acceptable drop-off location there.
Yeah, I just wanted to get that out for the public to understand that. Because I know there are people in, specifically in my neighborhood who have, you know, oil that they keep from Thanksgiving frying turkeys. And by June, it's still in their backyard because they keep forgetting to go up to Elk Grove. And this will just make it more handy. That's all I have, and again, thank you for this presentation, Mr. Selling and, and Mr. Vacares.
Yeah.
So a couple of other things too, just want to mention, you know, you mentioned about the cart being picked up, the yard and garden every week. It's actually a big deal because, you know, my old house, like, I had to really work hard to fit everything that I did in my yard because there are a lot of vegetation and grass and, you know, and to, you know, to fit into one cart, they got taken every other week for, for those people, you know, that are like that. This could be very kind of a nice little perk, you know, to get your garden, garden picked up every week for essentially no, no extra cost, really. I mean, there's no cost for organic, so maybe you can consider that the cost. But, and then the other thing about transportation is, you know, as everybody knows, you know, I'm really adamant about keeping Galt as clean as possible. It's like this, you know, crusade of mine. And so I think the transfer station is going to help tremendously with that because I would hope, and I'm not, you know, I think it's not going to take care of all of it, but I would hope that it would reduce the amount of things that we see when you drive out in the county and you see couches and refrigerators just dumped on the sides of the road. It's bad out there in some of the spots. I mean, out on like, or a road thing. I mean, I just, it's just disgraceful how many people do that. I would hope that. I would hope that having something close would help, help with people not doing that kind of thing. And they would be willing to just take it, because it's just right there at Twin Cities Road. So I'm hoping to see that. Um, um, going back to what Kevin was saying earlier about the City of California, I feel like these people get up in the morning and they say, what can we do today? And these are, I'm referring to our legisla- our state legislators. What can we do today to make businesses, more difficult on businesses? Or what else can I do today to be able to pat myself on the back? You know, let's do a new mandate that's gonna protect this or protect that. And I know that they have good intentions, but some of this stuff is just like, I mean, I don't envy you guys' business. I know we all have different types of businesses and they get impacted by different things, but, I mean, we had an ADU thing that got pushed off tonight that we've been working on for weeks. And now we had to pull it because California passed a new ADU, ADU law, which basically overrides and we have to like almost start over again. It's just ridiculous. So, um, anyways, so I, I just wanted to say that, uh, I'm glad we're able to get, uh, to the point we're at, so. Any additional questions by, uh, any of my council members? No, Jay's probably asleep out there. Public comment, anything?
Yes, Harry Wenzel.
Mr. Wenzel.
Harry Wenzel, Partridge Drive, Galt. I'll just echo what everybody said. I know a lot of work went into this. And I appreciate that, you know, being, I, I have to apologize to Mr. Sandu and Mr. Papinow. I didn't get, get around to you guys, but I still can get around to you. So let me just get right down to this. Uh, in the contract four dot oh eight, new transfer station operations. I think that that should say one dollar a year. I think that's what it says. Where it says, you know, somebody's gonna credit, somebody else is gonna credit. And I believe what we really have is we have, for whatever business reason, and that's you guys negotiating it, I think that it would be better stated to say that there's not gonna, well, it says there's no change of hands for money. Okay? Personally, I'd like to see it say a hundred and sixty-eight dollars. But as agreed upon and rate or whatever, that it's one dollar. Okay? And I know there's gonna be, there's gonna be a time where they go back and they get it. Um, you know, they, they go back and they reevaluate what that is worth. Which brings me to the next point. And that is that this fifty-five year contract, as I read it, even after you're done with, you know, we've got a twelve year contract or we got a twelve year period. We have a ten year extension. When you're done with that, we need to have the right language that says, you know, if we want to, if Cow waste wants to leave, or if, uh, City of Galt says, no, we wanna go out and we're gonna take this back out to the market. There needs to be a mechanism to do that, where we don't get in a fight with anybody. And, um, but I would like to say though, that so everybody understands, uh, and this is just me, my own analysis, I put a lot of time into it. What we have right now is we have the lower rate and the lower rate for the taxpayer. And then we have subsidies if you want, or we have give backs, whatever you wanna call them. Those give backs are not gonna go away when you hit twenty twenty-seven. I don't read it that way, okay? Those give backs, which are, um, and I just, these are just approximate here, but, uh, those give backs are in two forms. One is in the rent, you can argue eighty-four thousand, you can argue a hundred and sixty-eight. I'm not gonna argue over any of that, that's just what they, they are, it is what it is. And for the non-lease subsidy, which would be the franchise, uh, those remain in place. And if you read this a little bit further, if you read the contract a little bit further on, uh, page two, your franchise fees change, they change to seven percent. And I'll just, a slight math thing, I think that should be seven point five percent. It's twenty-five percent, okay? So, um, there was also a mention, and what I tried to do is I tried to take Mr. Selling's presentation, which I thought was very excellent. And I tried to take it back and look and say, where's that in the contract? And I was, uh, able to find most of it. I did not find, I heard mentioned, and maybe it's there, and that's that the admin fee would go to one percent. But I don't recall any time discussing that the admin fee would go to one percent, that it would stay at two percent. Or it wasn't even discussed, it was just the franchise, okay? I think that, I, I wanna address a, something that, because when I sit down and I talk to councilmen, they always fall back onto the two thousand and eighteen contract. That's what got me interested in city council and how the government runs in the first place. But what I find, and I'm glad Mr. Vacarez is here today, is that I, as a citizen, I think that, you know, people say, wow. I mean, what information can we have, what information can we not have? So I think as you, as you go through this, I think carefully consider, this is gonna, this is gonna put you back in for the remainder of, uh, nine years, okay? If you need information, you need to go negotiate that. And the smallest things, I asked for some information and they elected not to give it to me. So I have a, my, my model that I made, um, was not really completed. I can work without that, you know? Nobody owes me some numbers, that's not necessarily in the contract. But I would like to just say that those things are important. You've got electric trucks coming up and so forth. So on the contractual basis.
Mr. Wenzel.
Yeah.
Go ahead and, um, I'll give you about twenty seconds to finish up.
Okay.
Your time already.
Um, rather than try and just, you know, if anybody has any questions, I have other, I have other things to say. Sean, I know you and I have had long conversations, Rich, you and I have had long conversations. But, uh, I'll just finish it up with, you guys are gonna, you, this is a hard, this is a hard part of being a city councilman. And like I tell all of you, I still like it no matter how you vote. But sometimes you need to put this thought into, in that fifty-five years and getting it cleaned up. If we, if we break course, that's very important, I think from a business standpoint. Okay, thank you. And a nice shout out to, uh, Mr. Heinz, the, the Galt University was great, a lot of buzz about it, what a good thing.
Thank you, Mr. Wenzel. So I didn't wanna interact, cause to keep a dialogue, but I just wanted to comment for the public, some of the comments he made. So what Mr. Wenzel was referring to with the, with the extensions and stuff, he's referring to the solid waste contract. The renewals of that, the fifty-five, uh, the, the ground lease is separate from that. So there is like a gap where the solid waste contract will actually expire even with its extensions before we get to the end of the land lease. And so, um, I know Mr. Wenzel spoke to me about that and we talked about what would happen. So there, those are two different things. Um, also, um, I wanted to revisit, and you can clarify, Mr. Selling, but what he mentioned about those, those mitigation, those, those, those rate reduction things. In fact, there, some of them are only there to reduce the, that bump. We talked about that bump that takes place between now and twenty twenty-six. We, we worked to reduce that rate. Once we've done that, twenty twenty-six, there's no longer a bump anymore. So there's no reason, there's no reason for us to have that mechanism there to reduce that, because it's only a CPI from that. So those end there. As far as the business, you can correct me if I'm wrong when I finish. So as far as the, the nineteen point eight percent, twenty percent that we worked in as a side thing, we were working on to help mitigate old rates, you know, from the garbage contract. The intention was to do that for a length of time. And it is my understanding that at the end of this amendment in twenty twenty-seven, it will be up to the city council to decide to continue using whatever these measures to continue doing some reduction of twenty percent or whatever percent for those business rates at that time. But our mission was to provide a twenty percent reduction to garbage rates between now and twenty twenty-six for those things. So it was never like we're gonna just go in retro forever, twenty percent back off whatever. This was a rate relief that had a basically a sunset clause in our eyes, if I'm correct me if I'm wrong. And we knew that it does, in, in fact, twenty-seven, open back up to, do we wanna continue that at that point? Do we wanna keep funneling, you know, franchise fees back into that, do that? Am I wrong?
No, that's accurate, Mayor. Um, maybe, yeah, just to clarify, it was meant to be a short term and we were looking at essentially a three to four year window. What I believe would change, and I could probably flip through the slides if I can find it here, is what will sunset is the, uh, cart migration savings. Uh, there was only three years of that, so that will sunset. Now, it's obviously up to the cities and future council, uh, to determine whether or not they wanna continue essentially allocating the rent, say, from the city side for the twenty acres, uh, to rate relief at that point in time. Or, you know, as it's adjusted annually of CPI, do they wanna include that or do they wanna hold that back? These are all decisions, you know, for future council. Uh, the other thing is they would have the, uh, you know, latitude to, do they wanna continue to essentially forego the franchise fee and admin fee portions, uh, and apply those toward the rates at that point in time or not. Uh, all of those are up to, you know, future councils, so.
Right. And I think, I know when, when Harry and I met, you know, one of his concerns was a starting number. There was a question, it's like, well, how did you determine what the number was gonna be to start with? So it's very simple, I'll make this quick. It's kinda like an analogy, I'll use an analogy with this. So they came and said, this is what we think it's gonna take. And I know you and our staff also were looking at other municipalities. And there was an original number, correct me if I'm wrong, was like, I don't know, sixteen to twenty dollars is what we originally came out with. We think, we think this is what it's gonna cost, we're gonna need a sixteen to twenty dollar increase to be able to handle this program, because there was a lot of unknown variables, moving parts, we didn't really know. And we were looking at other municipalities and that seemed reasonable, but we were like, oh, we, Rich and I were like, we can't, sixteen dollars, no way, there's no, there's just no way. So we, through the process of negotiation, we were able to get it to nine. Like we, I remember saying, we want it to be ten or less. And then we got to nine. So think of it as buying a car, you go in and you don't tell them how much you're gonna put down or anything. You say, how much is this car? And then you negotiate the price of the car down to a certain number. And then you say, okay, what's my payment gonna be, whatever. So now you got the price locked where you're happy with that. And ours, for ours, it was nine dollars, right? Then we said, okay, what about if we, you know, again, back to the car analogy, what about if we, you know, um, I put more money down? So that's gonna make my payment less. Or I'm gonna go get it financed with my own credit union, which gives me like a great rate, so that's gonna make it. So then what we did is we started doing all those variables to take that nine. Once we had that nine negotiated and locked, we started then applying things to that nine to chop the nine down. And that's kinda how we came to what we did. And so the original number was just, you know, eh, eh, we felt it was a, a, a fair number. We negotiated it and then we worked, we hammered on that number to get it down. So that's kinda like, you know, what we did. And so again, I think it's a fair, I think the minimal is, we've seen the chart compared to the other cities. You know, we're not the lowest, but we're also, you know, we're right in the middle of the pack. I feel very confident that's fair, um, especially because there's an economy of scale that you spoke about, where we're a smaller city. And, you know, it's easier to ration rates across a larger spectrum of people, which we don't have. So anyways, um, I appreciate Harry's input on a lot of questions. You brought a lot of good questions forward, which made me think of other questions to ask. I appreciate your work on that and Harry's a numbers guy, so he, he's a sharp cookie, so thank you. Anyways, did Cow waste have anything else to add or council have anything to add? Where we're at here?
The only thing I would say is, uh, on the seventy, seven and a half percent or whatever, yeah, you're right. It does not speak to that as far as the breakdown between the admin and franchise fee. So we will probably have to work with the attorneys to actually nail that down. Are we gonna take a straight twenty-five percent off franchise and a straight twenty-five percent off? You know, which would be three quarters of a percent off of the two percent admin fee. No, not, uh, sorry, half a percent. So, or are we gonna take it, you know, some other split? Uh, that, that will probably have to be just a detail that we can iron out, so.
Okay, but for, for the sake of tonight, the number, the verbiage that's in there tonight is not gonna?
Yeah, I would just say it's a.
Language cleanup?
It's a clean, it's a cleanup at, at most. Um, it, it's really just a matter of how we characterize it.
Okay.
Um, but the key is it's twenty-five percent, um, and so we can, we can fine tune that.
Okay. Right. Well, um, again, so unless we have any questions, we have any additional public comment?
No comment.
Okay. Well, um, now again, just for the public to know that we have set a date in our consent calendar tonight for December the twenty-second, uh, which is the.
Twentieth, correction.
Twentieth?
Yeah, December twentieth.
December the twentieth.
Correct.
Uh, is our Prop two eighteen, which is a law requirement, uh, anytime you have any kind of rate, anything, regardless of any kind of amendment or whatever, that we have to do that. So that's the date, um, and that will be, um, obviously put out to the public in many different ways, as it's required by the law. Um, so I just wanted to state that. So with that, unless there's any further questions by the council or, um, my staff, I would entertain a motion to adopt a resolution approving the first year amendment to amended and restated collection services agreement with California Waste Recovery System, LLC, and number two, the grant and the new ground lease for a solid waste transfer station.
Move to approve?
Moved by Councilmember Papinow.
No, I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Lozano. We have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Yes. Approved four zero.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Rudy. Thank you to the Vacarez family and Cow waste.
I just wanna say, I, I, we love the partnership that we have with Galt and, uh, we look forward to this for the rest of our time here and thank you guys very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to communication, do we have any this evening?
None this evening.
All right, city clerks report, anything?
Uh, nothing.
All right, Mr. Heinz, comments by staff. Oh, I'm sorry, we're waiting for Mr. Vanderburgh, I'm sorry. We were just going on into the twilight.
Guess I found out my value real quickly.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. All right, back to, now that we have our council members all back, comments by staff, Mr. Heinz.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to let the council and the public know, we completed our first inaugural, uh, Galt University, uh, last night. Uh, we had a good group, um, and now a very knowledgeable group. And I'm so pleased and very proud to be associated with these individuals. A couple of alumni are here in the room, but, um, uh, it was a very good turnout. Uh, the group voted last night to actually, um, conduct this on a semi-annual basis. So we'll be looking at possibly doing this in the spring and in the fall. So, um, so I'm looking forward to that. But overall, it was a good, a good exercise and, um, we've got some citizens out there that know quite a bit about how this city runs. I wanted to give a big thank you to all the department directors who participated, as well as Chief Rodriguez from CSD Fire, uh, who came in and, and presented last night. Uh, like I said, a very good outreach effort with our folks and, um, very proud to be associated with the alumni. So now the alumni. And, uh, let's hear from Public Works Director Mike Selling, anything further, sir?
Uh, thanks, Lorenzo. Yeah, just a couple of quick things, uh, we are, I touched on it a little bit, uh, have got time slots available for the food waste pails. Uh, again, the city got a grant from, uh, the state Cal Recycle and we purchased about twenty-four hundred, I believe. And I think so far we've given out about four hundred. So plenty of time slots available, uh, in the afternoons and evenings. We did do a couple of, uh, events, uh, this past Friday and Saturday over at the market where people can, you know, you sign up online and you just come at your time. You really don't even need to get out of your car, just give them your name and address and you get your pail and you're on your way. So, uh, I just wanna encourage folks to take advantage of that, uh, opportunity. You'll be needing them come, uh, January, so, uh, so that's one thing. And then the other thing is the goats are always, uh, an, an item of interest, it seems. And, and so they're, uh, they're on the home stretch of their, uh, work effort here and probably, uh, maybe, uh, well, maybe by, uh, early next week or the end of next week, uh, they should, they should have completed their rounds. So, um, just, uh, wanted to pass that on to everybody. And, uh, and yeah, I would say, you know, for, for, uh, the one night that, uh, that I presented for Public Works, uh, I think it was much more of a, uh, you know, a question and answer, uh, session. Uh, cause it seemed like folks either already knew about it or they were just, uh, you know, just that in. just that enthused. So, I was very impressed with the, the group that participated in the Galt University, and like Lorenzo says, a couple here tonight. So, I was, you know, I think it's, it's a testament to the city when you, when you see some folks that are genuinely interested in how city government works, you know, and what the, what the limitations are that we have to work under. So, I think it's, it's, it's an eye-opening experience, I think, for a lot of them, and it, I think it's a win-win, not only for the city and staff, but for the community as well, to just better understand, you know, how, how government works and, and like I said, what those limitations are. So, I look forward to a future session, so thank you.
Thank you, Director Selling. Let's go with Economic Development Manager Amy Mendez.
Just to Mike's point about Galt University, it actually was a lot of fun. We had a great time with that group, and they had some really intriguing questions. And so, I think that it's a great opportunity for us to connect with the residents and really get down and dirty and explain what it is we do every day. And I think their feedback is really helpful in sort of future endeavors from a department level. So, it was a great time. We had an enjoyable, Craig and I double teamed, and we kept everybody there, probably like two and a half hours. They probably were really excited after hearing about community development and economic development that long. But it was, it was enjoyable. So, I don't have anything from economic development, but since Armando's not here, just wanted to let everybody know that the spookishly fun movie night is on Friday evening at Veterans Park. And so, hopefully, you know, folks in the community will be out there. I think they still have space for anybody who's interested in hosting trick-or-treat stations or for the scarecrow crawl that they have going on. So, Jackie Garcia and the Parks and Rec Department can answer any questions or connect with folks who might be interested in participating. But it's a free event, open to the public on Friday evening. So, everybody, have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, Brian Kalanowski.
Evening, Mayor and Council. The, a couple topics. Last meeting, Councilmember Papinow talked about the fentanyl issue, and so, we posted some information on our Facebook page related to an advisory that came out from the DA's office on that. That went up this evening. And then, on the Instagram side, because we reach a different demographic, we have some information that's up related to some warnings regarding rainbow, rainbow fentanyl and the impacts or the warnings related to that. So, we continue to do our outreach on that. We're working hard on the Traffic Safety Month endeavors, and this week's topic is speeding, and so you probably have seen some posts about that. And next week, since we won't see you, but it will be school safety. And then internally, we have that second traffic officer position posted for application, so hopefully, we'll have an announcement about that, that will be effective after January 1st with that shift change. And lastly, although Costco's had Christmas items up since August, I think it's okay to tell you in advance that on December 13th, we will have our holiday open house at Galt PD. And so, there's more information to come on that, and so, we'll get that information posted for the community. But there's a story time with our Grandma and Grandpa Cops, and some booking photo opportunities for the kids, and some coffee for the adults, and hot chocolate and cookies for the kids, so it should be a good night. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Let's go with our Finance Director, Matt Boring.
I just want to share, our external auditors will begin work on, on our annual audit at the end of the month, so staff's been real busy trying to finalize all of our year-end transactions and, and get all the schedules together. And our accounting assistant recruitment closed today, so we're hopeful that we'll finally be fully staffed. Our last couple of recruitments, we've had internal promotions, so we're excited about that and hope to be fully staffed soon. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Craig Hoffman, our Community Development Director, is telling me he has nothing to add. Really? Nothing? You sure?
I've used my words up.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. And other than that, just a final comment with Galt University, again, a great success. I'm, I'm very happy with the participation and looking forward to the next session. Back to you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. I will move on to comments by city council members and future agenda items. We'll start with Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you for all the staff giving us a DT report. Thank you for all of your hard work. I also like to thank you every public comment, and I also like to thank you all the citizen came to this meeting tonight. I also like to thank you local media. There is a few things I would like to report. One, first of all, I attended the volleyball tournament in Lodi at SecTempo. It was held in the honor of Officer Garawa. I'm thankful for the Sec. community for holding this event in its honor. It was a great turnout. Thank you, Chief Kalanowski, for attending as well. I also attended Coffee with Cop two weeks ago. I'm glad they were able to start doing this again. I think the community really enjoyed it and being able to interact with the, our police officer. I also attended the Chamber Networking Meeture at the Frontier Performance. They are on the industrial wave. I would like to ask Mr. Hines, any update on animal services?
No updates. We're still in conversation with the city of Elk Grove.
Thank you. The last thing I have, I met with the Teen Center Board of Director. They like to keep the presentation in a future agenda item. I believe they are already asked Ms. Hubert, so please, Mayor and City Manager, if possible. Thank you, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Papinow.
I want to say thanks and acknowledge the city and the two bargaining units on their long, patient work to come to the agreements that we approved tonight, and thank them in advance for the ongoing and future hard work to try and take care of our other two groups of employees. And then, also, thanks to the city and the chief for indulging my fentanyl concerns and interrupting traffic week. The seizure of rainbow fentanyl a week and a half before Halloween is a little concerning. For those that don't know, that's fentanyl disguised as candy. So, check out the social media, educate yourself, and pass the word around. Thanks.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank the unions and groups as well for their patience. Thank you to staff for all the number crunching and asking, you know, fulfilling our requests during the process. It's an interesting back and forth, I'll just put it that way. Thank you for all the public comment, and then, Mr. Spandario, I'm not sure to handle this, so I'm just going to say it here. I'm curious how to change the mechanics of the meeting. I'm not trying or wanting to get anybody in trouble, but now that the pandemic is over, our meetings aren't held the same as they used to be, and I don't know how that, what's the best way to handle that?
I'd probably just recommend either talking to the City Manager offline, and then, if necessary, could bring it back as a future agenda item at a council meeting.
Okay, so that needs to be discussed in public? It's...
If, if it's, like I said, I would probably recommend discussing with the City Manager, whatever the dynamic is, and then, and if need be, it's something that could be, you know, agendized ultimately, if it's, you know, it's going to take, if there's, if there's any kind of disconnect or miscommunication or anything, ultimately, it's going to require a majority of the, of the council. But, you know, I suggest first reaching out to City Manager and going from there.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't do that in the first place.
I'll ask Rose to reach out to you, and then we'll schedule an appointment. Thank you.
Mr. Lozano.
Yeah, I, I want to also thank the public and, for the public comment tonight, as well as staff for putting all this together. I want to reiterate the appreciation of our bargaining units, our labor groups, and their patience and their, their work on getting NMOU in place, and we did that successfully tonight. I also look forward to working hard on helping address some of the issues with some of our unrepresented employees and continue that conversation and, and hopefully have some resolution soon. I attended Coffee with a Cop, Chief, it was an awesome event. Many more people than I expected, because normally, at that time of evening, Starbucks is pretty slow, and so, and sometimes closed due to staffing. So, it was actually pretty good. And then also, I had the opportunity to attend the swearing and ceremony on the 6th, and very well done, and I like it because it's brief and it really focuses on the officers and employees and also their families. And so, I think that's important. So, thank you for that. Thank you for continuing to lead the charge in our public safety here in town, and, and look forward to many more Coffees with a Cop. And that's all I have. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, sir. First, thank you, Mr. Rossman and Mr. Wenzel, for your public comments tonight. Appreciate you always being here and giving your input. I wanted to remind everyone, Ms. Mendez mentioned it, but the, the city trick-or-treat event this Friday night, Veterans Field, and also the Fourth Street trick-or-treat event, which is happening on Saturday, the 29th, in Old Town on Fourth Street. I hear it's going to be quite the event. It's like the third year, I think, they've done that. And, and then, the Galt Community Cleanup is this Saturday at 9:00. If you're interested in coming out and helping make a difference in the community, 9:00 at Smud Park. The Beautification Committee will be leading that, and 9:00 Saturday, Smud Park is Kitty Corner from the high school. And then, again, it's been said, but I want to thank the bargaining units again for their patience in, in that process. And last but not least, I just want to say happy birthday to my daughter, Christian. With that, I will adjourn the meeting at 8:20 PM. With that, I will adjourn the meeting at 8:20 PM.